Okay, Ned, it looks like it's six o'clock. Let's start off by introducing, everybody introducing themselves. I'll start. My name's Scott Brier, Select Board.
Phil Marquette.
Dave Gallup, Acadian.
Nick Connell, Town Administrator.
Rory Merritt, Resident.
Dom, how about you? You're on mute, Dom.
You got me now?
Yep, we got you.
All right, you want me to start over again, or am I good?
No, just, we just want you to introduce yourself.
That's what I thought. Dominic Gervais, Coward G resident, Prudential Committee Chair, Fire District.
Martha Sylvester, Resident.
It appears Melissa's Gallup is with us and her audio is not working. Thanks, Melissa. Is that everybody, Ned?
That's everybody.
So let's call Monday, April 19th, 2021 at 6:02, 6:01, meeting to order. Changes or additions to the agenda? Do you have any, Ned?
I have none.
I don't, I don't have any, anybody else? Phil, Dave?
I'm good.
No, I'm just gonna bring something up in other business.
Okay. Public comments? Does anyone have any public comments? Okay, moving on. Number four, other business. Go ahead, Ned.
No, I'm just, Dom, it's up the floor is yours, sir.
All right, so, so here we are, haven't talked to you folks for a while because of my scheduling at work. So this happens to be my first day off, and then I have Tuesday, Wednesday off, then I go back to Thursday, so I go bed, go to bed early on Wednesday to get ready for another stupid week at work. So, the Fire District, where we're looking at in a nutshell, haven't had a meeting since January 12th. We're three months since the last time we had a meeting. Still have no help. Still looking for the Select Board to appoint two people to the vacant positions of the Prudential Committee. And a clerk and a treasurer. But, once we get the committee members, we can take care of that ourselves. We can point at that time. So, um, what's the, what are we doing with this? Where we going at it? I talked to Ned a couple times. Looks like nobody's really interested. Uh, I'll tell you, uh, I've been loving life. I've gotten more shit done for the Fire District in three months than it's been done in two years. Uh, we're actually looking a lot better than what people said we were back in the day. Uh, by next week, I will have all the loans cleared up. And that's remarkable. Uh, and the reason why we need to, that the district should be clearing up those loans is, in the reality of doing a budget, it drives it down. We don't have to include that when we do our budget for the next whatever years, and in turn, the rates won't have to go up as much as what they, we predicted they were gonna be. The problem is, gentlemen, that I'm coming to the crossroads, I'd say in about a month and a half. There's a lot of stuff that's supposed to be done last year, um, that I have to do here on my own because they would neglect it back in 2020. Uh, one is, uh, a couple things to the DEC. Uh, one is the, the SAAR report, which is if you're getting a grant or awards from USDA or whatever, you have to make a SAAR report every year. So the fiscal year is from June 1st till July 31st. So I'm right now working on a SAAR report that I haven't started. I'll start it out tomorrow and call up for uh, the DEC to get some additional help with this, uh, is for 2020. Uh, I, I got the SAAR report from the 2019, uh, which is not very helpful because there's not much on it. With the 29th, with the 2020, six months of that is with Jeannie, and then the remainder of that six months is with the new regime at that time. So, I, I will fight that starting tomorrow to try to make that complete. The other, the other thing is the, uh, the O and M manual. Uh, that has not been completed, which is due. So I got an email from the DEC the other day. If I do not get the OEM manual, the SAAR report done by May 13th, I am gonna, the Fire District is gonna lose $15,000 of forgiveness loan. And then they're gonna lose, um, any updating or any kind of funding that's, um, allotted or able for the district to get if they need it. That's gonna be done. I will not have access to that because I'll be, I'll be in default. Because they've been waiting for this stuff for over a year, and they've been nice enough to give me at least another month. So, there's no way that I'm gonna be able to do this OEM manual because a lot of it's gotta do with engineering, uh, updates for myself because there's been so many hands in the last two years from the old regime to the new regime, and because people did not talk from one to the other and vice versa. And everybody was new, they didn't get the proper knowledge that they should have gotten if they would have talked to one another. That to me, my opinion to me, was that one of the biggest downfall of the Fire District. If everybody would have worked together at the same common goal, I wouldn't be sitting at the position that I'm at. So I know Martha's here in the background, uh, and she's gonna have some, probably some bervage on this stuff, but I had to make it, I, I gotta be careful because I'm not allowed to make decisions. Because I don't have a quorum. But yet, this is to me is an emergency thing. So I called the different group today because I'm a good, I've got a good rapport with Stan. Stan's been a good guy and been helping me through a lot of this stuff here lately. Uh, the, the Fire District now is all paid up with the friend group, which is the engineer for the, the war, uh, the treatment facility, which is outstanding. Uh, so I had, I reached out to them and Stan is actually, and I gotta, I'm gonna be signing a piece of paper, but I'm letting the, to the Select Board know. So, so I'm not doing things hidden. It's all on the up and up, uh, that the friend group is gonna go and finish up the O and M manual, and it will be done on time for the state's deadline of May 13th. I will sign that with my name on it, and it's gonna go to Stan tomorrow. Uh, and that's gonna get done. So while Stan is working on that, and if there's information that they need between me and Pedro, because there's gonna be, uh, then we will supply the, the necessary information to be successful and completing the O and M manual that should have been done a while ago. Uh, so that's one thing that, um, I'm doing that. Wednesday, I'll be signing a check to pay off the $50,000 note. I just, oh, okay, um, Scott, I'll be signing a, a check for 50 grand. Well, it'll be 46,000 something. That's gonna pay off that $50,000 note that, uh, that we've been talking about for the last year and a half. Martha, you, you'll know, and as well, uh, uh, well, you guys know. Then there's this $20,000 that was up and about. Well, I just a little bit of research and started putting stuff together, talked to Stan and got some other, got his take on it and talked to a couple other people. And I think I found out the confusion about this $20,000. Tomorrow morning, I have a meeting with Paul Cicito and with Eric Law again. Um, it's been, I've been having meetings with these guys, even though I haven't been speaking with you folks for the last six weeks. I have been in constant communication with the USDA and Paul. This, I think, would be my, my fourth, I think my fourth, third, fourth meeting with these folks. So at nine o'clock, Ned, I'll be at the, um, at the community center again and having, uh, I'll be meeting Paul there and then have a phone conference with, um, with Deb and with Eric Law. And I will find out at that time about this misrepresentation about this $20,000, which in a sense, there was a $75,000 cost overrun, which, uh, $55,000 of that was a grant from USDA and then a $20,000 loan, which came from the USDA. But it was supposed to be into like a, a bond. Well, the reason why it was into a bond is because the beginning of this cost, which 1.333,000 dollars for this so said brand new water treatment facility, that they were gonna pay $1,047,000 and the Fire District was gonna go and pay $298,000. And then there, they were gonna, they had to go and secure a bond for that amount of money, and then it would, to pay up, uh, and then we paid the loan off in 40 years. What was supposed to happen with that $20,000, and I found the paperwork, it will be brought up at the meeting tomorrow with USDA because I'm gonna present this stuff myself that I found and did a little bit of research. Uh, is that that $20,000 is actually supposed to have been on top of the 298, making the total of $318,000. Um, so that's why there was supposed to have been another added bond for that $20,000. So what I'm gonna do, if that's the case, if the 3,000, if the $318,000 did not go through and the 298,000, uh, 298,000 went through, no harm, no foul. I will make a, sign out a check and I will pay off that $20,000. So we are allowed to get some more reimbursements from the USDA. I will also say gratulations to myself because I was able to get the first reimbursement through USDA with not a hiccup of $30,700, uh, since Jeannie has left, which is almost two years ago. Which was supposed to have been starting to getting done on a monthly basis when Jeannie left and then a new regime took over. Again, I believe that because of whatever reason of people not wanting to be successful or wanting the, the district to be successful or what have, I'm not gonna sit here and play the blame game. I don't believe in it and I never will. But I'm letting you folks know at this time, after all of this stuff gets setting done, there has to be some decision making's gonna happen. I'm gonna start, we're gonna, gonna work on a budget. Don't need a decision for that. We're gonna work on a budget. Problem is, it's gonna have to be passed. That was what was ruled, uh, the last time we voted, and it was approved, and it's all still by Australian ballot. So with that, need a quorum. Need to have people to step in and try to, and, and get through all this kinda stuff. That's one. Number two is rates. Rates gotta go up. And they're not gonna go up as much as what I thought, but they're still gonna go up. Uh, with that being said, there's some decisions that I would like to see or put forth is that there's some, there's some places that should actually, we should start introducing some meters. This will help with the rates of, um, to the members of the Fire District and try to make it a fairer system. Uh, I will talk to the USDA tomorrow to see if there's, if we can get a grant to get everybody on the, on the, um, on meters. That's why, in reality, that's the way it should be. Uh, this is what the state is going to. Paul's already told me the state is going where everybody eventually is gonna be on meters. And this is where I like to make it, it'll, it'll answer a lot of questions from people saying, well, I don't use that much water, or he's using a lot of water. This guy's washing his car all the time. That's gonna take all that crap out. And it's gonna be a more fair system. So, at some point, gentlemen, I would say probably two months, hopefully I'll have all of this hard stuff done. And then it's gonna start being easier, but I need some willing volunteers that's got the same kinda drive that I have to make this successful. And I'll tell you, I'm gonna be blunt with you folks. If I hear any discussion of what I've heard recently about getting some people in there for a month or two or three months, you can go and do what you want. You're, you're the select man. But the minute I get somebody in, I'm resigning that same day. I'm just, it's not a threat. It's a promise. I've worked too hard and gave up a lot of my own stuff. I got a brand new car sitting in my yard with a flat tire. I'm not out there today taking care of Fire District business so we can be successful. It's gotta stop. Dude, I, I do have a life just as well as you folks got a life. I need to get to it. Uh, I like what I'm doing. I've got a good passion for it, but jeez, I need some me time pretty soon here. So tomorrow, my day's booked up. I gotta meet with the USDA. I gotta start working on the SAAR report. Meet with some other folks about some other things that's, that's on the, that I, I gotta do before. Oh, another thing, just looking around. Uh, Source Protection Plan. Just happened to look around and all my paperwork, I got hit with a Fire District, and I got half of the Fire District stuff right here in my room. Uh, the last time when it was done was, uh, 2017. I looked at the paper, guess what? April 1st of 2020, it was another Source Protection Plan was supposed to get done. So now I'm in the middle of that. I talked to somebody. I'm not gonna name no names. But they're helping me out with this. Uh, I'm telling, I, I, I'm out there researching and helping, getting the people that I know is gonna help me to make things successful for the district. I'm not gonna say names because it's my own reasons. Uh, if anybody wants to ask me, I'll tell you, but I'm not gonna be willingly to give it out. Uh, so that's why I'm asked, Scott, uh, I've been doing this, like it says, three months on my own. Uh, and I wanna thank if Deb, I don't know if Deb's on or not. I wanna thank Deb again. I thank her all the time for what she's done. Uh, we had to send a letter out to the, uh, to all of the Fire District members, um, for, uh, for our billing for, uh, the quarterly's. And we had to put a letter out there, uh, because some people did not get billed for a quarter last year, and we had to go and try to get that payment caught up to date. Uh, I actually had to go, uh, and talk to a Fire District member the other day. I didn't wanna do it on an email. I actually went to her and did a face to face because that's, that's how I wanna do things. Uh, and I got it straightened out, taken care of. She understands. Uh, I talked to Deb today to put a little bit more information on the invoices. So there's some people that didn't have a number to contact or talk to somebody. Uh, that's not gonna be an issue the next time the colleagues get sent out. People would be better informed. Uh, I'll be working at probably before the next quarter gets sent out. I'll be working on a letter. I talked to Ned. It was a good idea that, uh, the discussion him and I had as far as, uh, letting the Fire District members of, uh, my progress, so to speak, of what I've made in the last, uh, three months on my own, uh, for the Fire District members know because they don't have a clue what's gonna been going on for the last two years. They may have some innuendos. They might assume, but in reality, they don't know because to be honest with you, Rory, Martha, probably even Melissa, myself, we were all on the assumption that there was hundreds of thousands of dollars out there that was in loans and all fraudulent and all this kinda stuff. Well, guess what, gentlemen? Next week, there won't be no loans except for one, which everybody knows about. And that's gonna be the $298,000 that we have for 48, 40 years, and we'll be paying that off. So.
Yeah, good job.
So that's, that's, that's my update for you folks, uh, letting you know where the Fire District is at this time.
So Ned, so what is the next step? You've had some communication with VLCT regarding, regarding the Fire District and town involvement. What, what does that look like?
That, VLCT, uh, gave the town some recommendations, and it was basically the same recommendations they've given us before about that there, that, that Fire District is a separate municipality. And if we wanted to ask VLCT, because we're both Fire District and the town are VLCT members, if we wanted to have a joint, uh, letter to VLCT signed by yourself and Dominic, asking specific questions, they would address specific questions, but they wanted to make sure that they had the agreement of the chairs of the two municipalities together before they would answer specific questions. But, uh, their thing is the same thing as ours. We need to find someone to help Dom and be a quorum and then go from there.
Guess that's what my question was gonna be was, uh,
I got a question.
What do we, what do we do if nobody's stuck forward to wanna take it? Because we can't just say here, you're gonna do, you're gonna be a, uh, board member.
Thank you, Phil. That's, that's my, that, that would have been my next questions to, uh, to the board.
I guess that'd be my thing is if we had any question to go to them as a parent, and I think Dom would agree, is that that would be the one question to go to them for is say, what do we do?
Well, that, that was the one question they were, and they're able, certainly able to answer it. They're unwilling without a joint communicate, having both signatures of Scott and Dominic. And I'll put together a letter tomorrow morning that has it. I'll get Dom to sign it tomorrow, and I'll get Scott to sign it sometime either later to tomorrow or at, you know, sometime later this week, and we'll get it off to them ASAP.
Yeah, let's get the, let's get the answer to that question so we can figure out what to do.
It's kinda funny because you can't do anything if you got nobody wanting to do it. And if we have to stick within the district, which I think we have to, you can't have, we can't have outside the district members, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Then it's like, well, what are we supposed to do?
Well, you know, to, to, to be honest with Phil, this in a sense gave me some, I hate to put it this way because Martha's gonna hate me for what I'm about to say, but it's the truth because this has been an emergency status. This is actually giving me a little free roam.
Yeah, yeah.
To do what I have to do to get us as far as I did get us. Um, it, to me, it's, I'll tell you, it's good stuff. Uh, you know, thank God that I got Deb to keep on reminding me that, hey, what you're doing is good stuff. Uh, so I'm just plugging along and then trying to do, you know, the, the thing is, is that I do one thing and there's a few others that pop up, you know what I mean? Uh, and, and I'm trying to do this, um, you know, I, I got somebody in my corner, uh, thank God. Um, that's assisted me, um, but this is all good stuff for the Fire District. Um, I bet that if all the other members knew about all this kinda stuff, uh, eight, nine, 10 months ago, I probably wouldn't be sitting here talking to you folks right now. You, you know, uh, I don't understand what Ned was saying about where the VLCT wanted signature from Scott and signature from me. Uh, if I had to throw a question out there to the VLCT or whatever, I mean, if they don't answer these questions, you have a lawyer. Uh, I have a lawyer. Uh, I don't want to use Fire District money when I don't need to. Uh, it would be unexcusable. God forbid, we used enough of it already. Uh, but I was able to get some of it back through USDA, uh, which is a plus for me. Uh, and using that route, but we lost some income because of some dumb mistakes that we made as a quorum already. Uh, that I will have a discussion, uh, when I have our other members so we can rehash that out later on down the road. But to me, it's a simple question. I mean, if you look into what the VLCT already sent me, it's just straight up, straight answers. It's the task of the Select Board to appoint somebody till the next elected cycles. Simple, unexplainable. It's there. It, it, black and white. That's what the Select Board is, the responsibility is to appoint somebody to the Fire District for me to have help so I can get this thing done. At this time, if this doesn't happen in two months, and I can only, and I've gone as much as I could do, my next question to my lawyer is, is probably gonna be into, um, receivership. You folks, I'm, I mean, you, you gotta look at my point of view here. I'm doing the best that I can and trying to be uh, calm, cool, collective. Trying to take a day at a time. Uh, doing good stuff, but at, at, at a time though, gentlemen, there's, Phil, thank you for being there. Uh, it's gotta come. Now, I asked a question to the lawyers, uh, because I thought it was going that way when I had a meeting six months, uh, six weeks ago with you folks was that can a Select Board assign a select member to be a committee member of the Fire District? Yes, but not, um, shouldn't work that way. That'd be the last, last resort because to me, it's a conflict of interest. And I, I, you know what? I shouldn't say that. It depends on who the individual is, I guess. Uh, to me, it would probably be an integrity issue. It's like getting somebody for a one month or two month, and then they go their own way. That's an integrity issue. That's not why I believe, Scott, that you came on as a Select Board. I don't believe it was in Phil's mind or even Dave's mind that, you know what I mean? I'm coming in for two months so we can get this passed, and then I'll see you later. It's not gonna get by me. Like I said, I'll resign. Or you know what? I won't even do that. I won't even do that to the Fire District members. I'll go and go into receivership. And let them, let them, uh, let the lawyers, let the lawyers fight it out. And I just give all the documents and all that, and this big lit thing lifts off my shoulder and say, shoot, Dom, you did all right. It's been, it's been It's been, it's been good. Let somebody else take it from there. Hopefully it might be in better hands or what have not. Remember, whatever way it goes, the town, I'm just saying if, I don't know, but if I would still be trying to help as much as I could because I'm actually learning a lot of stuff by doing all this kind of stuff. Rory, since you're on.
Okay, hang on just one second. Martha has her hand up. So before we move, Martha has her hand up. Martha, go ahead with your question.
So I don't really have a question. First of all, I want to say Dominic, I'm extremely proud of you. And you're handling yourself phenomenally and you, you are toeing the line where you are expressing facts. And you have my utmost respect and whether I agree or disagree with you, our integrity is there. So never worry about offending me. I know where your heart is and I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you, Martha. So, so Rory, if I can, Ned, can I talk to Rory? So Rory, if you can give me that information for the Sams so I can get and, and get that straightened out. If you can sign on with your stuff and, and it's good to go, just send it to me so I have it to sign and then I will change it once I'm in there. I've been doing so much stuff that I couldn't find it in your box that you gave me.
Okay, I'll see what I can do.
If you can do that for me, that's another thing I can check off my block that I got the, the Sams done to, to us. All right, I appreciate that.
Give me a call after we get done with this meeting.
Okay, so Scott. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to be honest with you folks.
Yeah, no, we, we appreciate it. And that, I think the reason why Ned is requesting the letter because we've reached out to VLCT to ask, you want, go ahead, Ned.
Just we've asked questions three or four times and we need that they'd said basically that we've asked several times. They're tentative in answering unless we have a joint letter from both organizations signed saying, please answer this question. We've, you know.
Which I'll, I'll say, I'll have to agree with Dom is, and I'm, I've got the email up right now from them. They beat around the bush on answering you. They did not answer you and they didn't, and it really is kind of frustrating on that part. Looking at this email and the question you asked, which was exactly that of what do we do? And they said, no, we won't say anything until you got approval from both.
Yeah, so with all due respect, Ned, can you send me the questions you asked VLCT? But she's in giggles. I'm going to send them those questions, okay? I can, I can do this too, you know, okay?
Sounds good.
I had the email up.
Goddamn head house. I don't have a problem with it. And if I don't like the answers, I'll go to the lawyer. You guys have a lawyer. It's, it's just, it's just too easy to be danced around with a fight, with a fire district, with what I've been doing for the last three months. You guys need to be more serious and be as serious as I am with this thing. I mean, you could have done this six weeks ago, Ned. And if, and you shouldn't, and you shouldn't have had some communication with me to let me know. So I could have put, I, what, this is six weeks of stuff. That's down the road again. You're kicking, I'll, I'll use the Republican term or whatever, kicking that can down the road. You know, so here we are six weeks later and still nobody wants to be involved with, with the district. With the fire district as, as a member. Now, I noticed that there's a member that you were telling me, Ned, she's on the
Go ahead. I've asked everybody who's in the district, who's on a board already, if they're interested and I have gotten polite no thank yous or no response.
Right, so, so
and I've literally asked people who I know live in the district walking by. And they've said, no.
And, and, and to be honest, you're honest with you, I can't blame them with the hard work that I've had to put into myself. Who's got the time to do it? I mean, I'm debating a lot of stuff that I want to do to my own, my own residence. That I'm, I don't have the time. And then what, and to be honest with you, is that once I get done from work, day before yesterday, it's a 16 hour day. My truck broke down. I gotta go and still do my job and come back home. And now it's my days off and now all day long today, I'm, I'm fighting with fire district tomorrow, the same way. And Wednesday, I'm going to say, I need to take a little bit of time so I can fix the tire in my car and some other stuff. Yeah, I can't blame them. So I'm just letting you guys know that once I'm done with what I'm working on, things are going to get a lot easier because I've done most of the hard work.
I will certainly pass that along. I just want to add, Melissa Gallup added a key thing about the letter with both signatures clearly demonstrates mutual consent between the entities, which is what the lawyers at VLCT require. So they give us an answer and I think they'll give us bigger, more robust answers.
So what was the question you were asking? I don't even know what that question was.
The question is, what if we can't find anybody? What do we do? Where do we go?
I'll tell you what, by the next meeting I come to, I will have that answer for you. Guaranteed, I'll have that answer because it's going to be the route that I go if I don't get somebody. How's that?
Okay, but I'll, I'll, I'll still write up the letter for us for everyone to sign. Dom, don't, don't do anything rash.
I'm not going to do nothing ration. I told you, I'm calm, cool and collected. I'm just letting you know. And two months from now, my stuff is going to be done. There's going to be decisions going to be made and I can't make them because I'll be in more hot water than I probably already am.
Okay, well, Dom, we appreciate everything you've, you've done and thank you for the update and keep up the good work. We'll get this answered by VLCT within the next couple of days and Ned will reach out to you and we'll move this forward in one way or the other, one direction or the other. Thank you very much.
That's the only question Ned that you had was what happens if I don't get nobody?
Exactly, because the merger question, Martha asked question about a merger. The merger question, it needs several votes, several other votes, legislative process. It's, it could take two years at the, at the easiest, so.
Yeah, well, you know what, Ned? You're actually right. It's actually going to take, it may take longer than that, but guess what? Once I make that decision and throw it in and go into a receivership, I don't have to wait two years. My part's done when I hand everything over.
Oh, exactly. But please understand, Dom, that the receiver is not the town. The receiver is some bureaucrat down in Montpelier. Or some hired hand from them.
I, I get it, Ned. I read up on this. I, you're not, I know, I know. It's going to be between the judge and the lawyers. That's how it's going to work. They're going to dictate what goes on. I get it.
Right, and I don't
But Ned, I think what you, what you don't understand is is what I've gone through in the last three months on my own. In with Deb. I mean, she's doing the bookkeeper stuff and all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of stuffs that I gotta go through and to stay with Pedro. I'm just saying, if this, if, if you're giving me the answer right now, what I'll do is that when I'm done and, and, and the USDA says, okay, Dom, you had a good run at it. You've done very good. At this point, you're done. This is where you start needing some, a quorum. And you just got through telling me nobody's involved. So my next question to the lawyer is going to be, not VLCT, the lawyer, I'm going to say, I've, Mr. Richardson, this is it. I, I, I no longer can do what I need to do to be successful with a fire district. What's the next thing I'm going to do? He's going to give me two things. Most likely, it's going to be the receivership. That's the best way to go. I think I'll find out from the lawyer itself or, or Eric Law because he's up on this stuff as well. And then I will, as, as a good municipality to another, I will go and, and be on a meeting again, Scott, another update and then let him know at that time, I'm bowing out. And everything's going to be forwarded to, in the lawyer's hands or whatever. I mean, Phil, I know you understand. This is where I'm at right now. And, and I was hoping that there was going to be some more people on from the fire district because I really wanted some, some feedback on, on maybe what they've heard and try to, we just tried to boost their morale a little bit and saying, we're still afloat and we're still doing the right things for the fire district members. So Ned, if you happen to see people out there and all that kind of stuff, we are still doing the proper things for the, for the, for the members. God for what you said.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you folks. I'm, I'm going to bow out and start doing a little bit more reading. Martha, I tried to go over your house today. Give me a buzz. Did you hear me, Martha?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call you, Dom.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So, u- under other business, uploading meeting recordings to online source?
Yes, we have the Zoom only will allow us to store approximately two gigabytes of meeting recordings, which, excuse me, ends up being about two or three meetings depending on the size. So I would like to upload our meetings to YouTube. Now, this would only be if YouTube will accept them at, at no cost. I am not sure that is the case at this point. And I'm not sure if the town has a YouTube account or a Google account at this point. So that will be just a quick reference. Phil, if you know, just yell. And I'm planning on just uploading them, I, you know, maybe af, you know, when the minutes are approved and or a week or so later. But they're not a substitute for the minutes. They're just an additional source that people can go and see. It will be absolutely, it will be no cost if YouTube says we're going to have to charge you so much. I'm going to bow out and say, no, thank you. And we'll just distribute it to people as needed from there. You know, by hand here at, at the town hall. So I'm just looking for the consensus of the board to say, yep, that's okay. Go ahead and take care of this.
Phil?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to get my mute off. We don't have any accounts. I think it's a good idea. I think we got to look into it. I don't know YouTube very well on, as far as posting things. On a same similar subject, Ned, I know we've talked about the website. I have somebody that I just worked with for rebuilding websites and I thought, I know I had another, it was separate than the one that I talked to that doesn't really let you do anything. This guy will rebuild it and then give you the access to it. There might be a way to just upload and use him as the, because he's got his own server, hosting server. So there might be a way to do it that way too, if we talk to him. But definitely we can look into it and try to get, and do it the right way, the cheapest way.
Are these, are these recordings required to be on our website, on the town's website?
They're required to be available. So they don't have to be anywhere. They could be stored. We could build a server or storage server at the office and, or at the, the community center and have them just stored there. That way if somebody wants it, but it won't be easy to get it to them if they ask for it that way.
So like how available?
You can make it available. It's not as secure and nice that way. It would be definitely easier to do the website.
My, my assumption is that we would put up, you know, a, a, let's just say a calendar year to the past worth of meetings. And then as a new, as it gets filled to that date and we start circling back to, let's just say next February, we would delete the prior year's February and just add the new one and continue on. We do PC and select board and the other meetings that, any other official meetings that are on Zoom. And certainly I would keep, I'll keep, I'm also going to keep them here. If someone wanted to come in and get a copy of a, a meeting video, bring in a thumb drive. I can put it on it and they can watch it to their heart's content.
So if, what is the benefit? Say we did have a YouTube account. We uploaded these meetings to the YouTube account. Would you give, you would give the person the YouTube number or they're just available for anybody at any time?
If, if somebody from Pakistan wants to watch this meeting, like let's just say we uploaded this meeting. Somebody wanted to watch it when they were someplace else, they can go onto YouTube and watch the meeting at their, at their leisure.
Since they're public meetings, I wouldn't put any restrictions on it. I have it, the city does it or any K, oh, that's who I could call any KTV. I could talk to Todd and find out how the city, how they're doing it with the city. Because they, the, any KTV records all the city's council meetings and then they're uploaded to any K, any K's site. Or any K's YouTube channel. But they're all public, have it on there and then you can just go search for Town of Coventry and look at it. Then you don't have anybody asking you. You don't have any time Ned spent for people trying to find it and having to send them links and all that. It's all there.
All right, that'd be
You can set a YouTube link up on the website, so.
All right, so we'll, we'll do a little more research, but it sounds like it's a, it's a basically a go as long as we can do it for free. And whether YouTube or any KTV, we'll figure out. Or the, the gentleman Phil stated with the server. Martha has her hand up, by the way.
Go ahead, Martha.
So I just want to read from you the open meeting clause. It says five day, five calendar dates from the date of the meeting. Minutes will be available for inspection and copying and posted to a website if one exists. That the public body has designated as their official website must remain on website for at least one year. One VSA, three, one, two, B, two.
Yeah, that's minutes though, right?
That's minutes, yes.
That's minutes, that's not the video.
Not videos.
So it, it also talks about, the Secretary of State talks about this. I would check it out because the secretary says the same thing when it says that you can, when it talks about going into remote meetings. So it does say it in that, and I just don't have that one handy. So it does say it in the one the Secretary of State puts out about the coronavirus.
Yeah, if I recall, I know it's, you, you need to record them if you're doing remote meetings. So I just found it, hang on. Must record their public meetings and unless unusual circumstances make it possible to do so. And then it's the minutes that are in that timeframe. The recording does not need to be posted. It just needs to be available if somebody wants it.
Times I've requested the meeting videos and I still am not getting agendas again. I'm again not getting minutes after in the required 10 days like by, by email like before. So I mean, I don't know what's going on.
So Ned, I think we need to figure out, I've got to look into, maybe we got to look into a newsletter service that has a better way to set up contact groups or dist, or it might be even, should be able to even do it with the GoDaddy email or the emails that we have to set up a district group. If anything, I've been looking at changing over to Microsoft Office 365 anyways, and I know you can do it in there. So you can set up district groups with, and just add your email, the emails. And then all you have to do is type in the one email address and automatically sends it to everybody.
So this GoDaddy account that we use is user unfriendly?
It doesn't have the, it doesn't have the features that Microsoft Office or 365 has or like Google Suite like you guys have. It's a slimmed down version of my Office 365 on the GoDaddy.
Okay, I think we should look into whatever updates. Updates we need to make and, you know, Phil, maybe we can hire your services to make this happen.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, five, policy review and re-adoption.
So I got one other business. A few meetings ago, I don't remember how long ago it was. There was the state was doing grants for hotspots, wireless hotspots in town. And I didn't apply for it because we knew the school had it and we were, they, they were at the time talking about doing it strictly for places that didn't have anymore. We got an email a few weeks ago Few weeks ago that they have extra money and they're putting things out. So long story short is I have applied for it. We will be getting a. Wireless hotspot installed at Lady Bird Park. And yeah, that's pretty much it. There, so there will be a wireless hotspot or wireless availability down at the park and ride and in the park down there. Uh, for the public to access, be able to do. Schoolwork and what they might need.
That's good. Thanks, Phil.
Hey Phil, how is that, um, what's that hung off of? Who has to?
It's gonna be hung off of the community centers Comcast. We're gonna do a point to point from the community center down to the park. So we're gonna upgrade, we're gonna upgrade the, well, I can talk more details with you.
Yeah, okay, fine.
It's gonna, it's gonna be secured fine, se- separate from the town's network and all that, so. We've got all the equipment down there already to be able to do it. I just started getting it taken over from Tech Patrol.
Yeah, we'll talk later.
Yep.
Okay, any other business? Five, policies, review and re-adoption. Go ahead then.
Okay, uh, the select board had asked me to, to bring up, uh, policies that have been adopted. In prior years or recently for, uh, review after the, uh, reorganization meeting. And we have several, one, sorry, I'm about to share my screen. One on the agenda, uh, we have some late editing, editing to put in, so we have to table it to the next meeting and that one is. Be the accounting, auditing and financial reporting policy. We'll have to table that one until next time for, for, just for right now. But let's go to social service policy and I'll share my screen. This is the, uh, one that we adopted a while back. Just, it was just in, uh, I would say it's probably in February or so, but no real changes. I just looking for the board's, you know, re-acceptance and re-endorsement. And, uh, are there any questions?
Were there any changes? What were the changes that were made to it? Was there anything?
Uh, there were, there was a misspelling and if you can see my mouse, you see this special character right here?
Yeah.
I can't highlight it. Oh, yes, I can.
Yeah.
Instead of saying that special character, it said five in a number of locations. So that's been fixed. And other than that, no other changes.
I'll make a motion that we approve. The social service appropriation policy or re-approve it. All those in favor?
Okay, moving.
Yeah, tabling B?
Yeah, tabling B. Let me go and share a different one. Let me, uh, cash receipts. Where is that one? Right there. Cash receipts, this is one that hadn't been adopted. It was several years ago that it was adopted. I've, I've tried to go out and format them all, so they all look exactly the same. They have a purpose statement. They have the various authorized personnel, proper payees, various things. They all follow exactly the same format. There. Were no, there were some misspellings in this one that have been fixed. And David Barlow has reviewed it. And I know, I believe Deb has also reviewed it, but it just goes through. The town's policies on cash receipts, petty cash and return check policy. Pretty, pretty basic stuff.
Did you wanna share that with our screen? I mean, I can, I see it.
Can everyone see that?
No, I have it on a different email, but you don't have.
I have to go share again, okay, sorry.
Oh, you were sharing my program, weren't you, or when?
Yeah, there you go. Sorry about that. But yeah, like I said, they all follow the same format. They're all, you know, the same text, it's the same fonts. And, uh. The, I forget where the misspelling was in this one, but, uh. It's been through a viewer of the, the staff and it has, you know, a date and a signature lines with the, the prior. Policy did not, and has all the important people who will be dealing with it as signatories onto the policy. Dave, do you want to add anything? Dave Barlow, that is?
Only that I have my own. Um, acceptable payment policy that is part of this, I think somewhere referenced.
Yeah, it's on this page.
Of what I, as a treasurer, what I will accept as acceptable forms of payment. That's the one where I talk about, um, there's two actually. There's one that talks about acceptable forms of payment to pay taxes. The, uh, education based taxes. And then I have a separate one that is acceptable forms of payment for everything else.
Should that be added into this or that combined?
It is.
It is right here where I've highlighted where it says collection of funds. All collected funds are subject to the town treasurer's policy on. Yeah, it's published separately.
I make a motion that we, um, approve the policy, the cash receipts, petty cash, uh, policy. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Moving on to D, which is the fraud prevention. All right, stop share. Start share again, fraud prevention. Where'd you go? There we are. Share. Fraud prevention is another one from a couple of years ago. Again, purpose statement. What, what to do if you see an irregularity either in a, as an official or a town employee? Oh, excuse me. Sorry about that. And, uh, who to report it to and the, you're sort of in, in the chain of command. And then it goes through. Some various things, how to investigate it and. The, uh, again, how different things are structured. And on the second page, it just has the signatory lines and I'll change the X's and everything once we get these approved and get signatures on them. So pretty, very straightforward. For my, uh, guess, this came from about two thousand eighteen or two thousand seventeen. It was a, one of the fairly older policies that we had.
I make a motion that we approve the fraud prevention policy.
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, hang on, you're going too fast. I can't write that quickly. Okay. Stop that share. And share, uh, credit card policy.
I didn't get one.
A credit card?
I did, it was in the same email.
I'm kidding.
You didn't get a card.
A joke.
So. I had a question on this one. It was one that I actually got some time to spend on. Um, under security and this might be, it's Ned or David Barlow's. The select board with the, the town minister will provide the select board with a weekly report detailing all credit card transactions. Does it need to be weekly? Does that need to happen? Does that? At what intervals should it happen? I guess I can see that it would be nice to have, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think I can address that. Um, really the only person that can look at. With authority, look at and see what credit card transactions have happened is the, um, accounts payable. Accountor, which should be Deb Tangway, cause she's the one that has access to the website. So, um, probably weekly is. Might be a little too frequently, but, uh, every month would certainly be. Suitable. Um, normally you have to report fraudulent charges within thirty days if I'm. I have to look up to be sure for this particular credit card system, but it's not normally every week.
And I guess. Not that I'm trying to push something off of this like board, but I guess me looking at the credit card transactions. I'm not gonna probably figure out fraudulent better than.
Uh, good point. Uh, normally what both Ned and I do, and of course normally is the past couple of weeks since we've got this thing running. Is send the receipts. As we generate them, we send them to Deb. So that she knows it's, it's a real charge and then. Put it on the, um, in the right places on the AP stuff.
Yeah, and.
And I think that's the place where you're gonna see it because you'll get the receipt, send it over to her to put the, do the AP and then she'll compare it to the credit card bill. Right?
Right.
There's a receipt missing.
Uh, well, there's that, but there's also the, my, I guess my point is you can, she can look at the website and see what's posted.
Right, yeah.
Um, and how frequently she does that probably is driven somewhat by this policy, so.
Yeah.
That's currently right now, that's really just once a month and it's when we go in to actually pay the invoice, or I should say our balance for that month. And then what Dave or Ned has sent to me as far as charges goes with that. Bank statement together as one, or credit card statement, I should say, not bank statement.
Good thing I didn't talk bad about her. I didn't know she was on here.
Yeah, the, the other thing is the, um, we tend to have that, uh. Double receipts for some of these things. So we have like the initial purchase and the shipping. Info that we print out and a receipt generated map. And then we have an additional receipt. When the credit card comes in, so we can cross-link those. So there's always sort of a double. Form of receipt and also gets the, as you said, the AP gets sent around. So people get to check out exactly what's going on and Deb has broken down each charge within. And each item in some cases within each charge. And also, go ahead.
So should we make a motion to approve this credit card policy with, um, with the correction of the weekly report? Um, changed to monthly report?
Yes.
And then I get the next paragraph is documentation is each month with a submission now. Does that work in line with your Deb of doing AP? I guess, I guess it depends on how stringent we're getting to look at this. It's like, we say each month, but you might not, you might do. Well, I guess, would you do credit cards twice a month? Or what if?
Oh, credit cards are just done once a month. And what happens is now I'm actually able to go on, download our credit card statement. Which I do, then I match it with the AP that I have received from Ned or David as far as the charges go. And then I place those copies of the charges, whether it's an invoice or whether it's. Well, usually it's gonna be like an invoice or an email or something to the effect of. Who is charging the dollar amount they're charging and it matches with a credit card statement and then that goes together. Um, so I think as far as what we're receiving for documentation is great. Sometimes if I am missing something, then I'll just go back to Ned or I'll go back to David, whichever one it may be or just say, hey, I missed him this charge for. This certain thing and usually they're able to go right back, find it and then send it to me. So at least when I present to you the credit card warrant for that month. You have the statement and then you have every single invoice copy that correlates to what's on the statement.
Yeah, I just realized I read the, that, that second paragraph wrong too. It says select board office, not to the select board. That would be Ned. That's what, that's all I had on that one, that part. So I guess, yeah, making the motion the way I think you said, Scott.
Okay, so let's make a, I make a motion that we approve the credit card policy. As written with one change, um, from. Weekly to, oh, it's already changed. Yeah. It's changed with the correction monthly.
Yeah.
Report detailing. Do you have a second?
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, moving on to the reimbursement. Policy. This is another fairly old policy. It was. Just, it was actually just one or two sentences, so I've expanded it a little bit. To four or five sentences, but it still is the same thing. It goes through and it makes sure that it has purpose statement. I will fix purchases so that it is in all caps. Hang on, I can do that right now. There we go. And, uh, but it's basically, it says how employees spending money. Need prior authorization for ev- almost everything with the select board.
Is it feasible to change in the purchases? All purchases must be made through to. Something because I can see at some point. You might not be able to make the purchase through a vendor or town credit card. You might, because at that point, this, this is reimbursement. So if you're doing it that way, you don't really have reimbursement. When you're forcing it all through the, that town vendor or credit card.
Okay.
Just say all purchases, period, right? Just all purchases.
Yeah.
All right.
Because you might. You might pay PayPal, you might pay however.
Yeah.
Right, we might pay. Bitcoin, then.
Because the, the top part in Bitcoin, there you go. You gonna mine anymore of that? The security part. I, I'm just looking at those two paragraphs maybe being contradictory of each other. Cause purchases made or, and or expenses incurred without pri- uh. Cause you need the prior authorization. Maybe I'm just looking too deep into it. Uh, David Barlow, see what I'm thinking or not?
Yeah, the second sentence is much more limiting than the first. The first one merely implies that if you, if you, if you're trying to beg forgiveness. You might get refused, whereas the second sentence says, you're toast.
Yeah, that, yeah. I almost, I almost think that purchases line doesn't even need to be there.
I would get rid of the first sentence.
Of that one?
Yeah.
Do you want to? Add purchases, mileage and travel expenses will only be paid to employees when it. You know, blah, 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 or.
Purchases, mileage and you might just add the word purchases.
Okay.
I think it's, it's rare, but it does happen. Um, I had to do one myself and we didn't have credit cards after Amanda left and we had, we had to buy stamps. I had to buy some stamps.
Yeah, and that was my thought is, and then I think that takes care of that purchases line down the next paragraph you can take.
So but what if, what if, for instance, um, Dave Gallup had to use his own person, person, he had an emergency with a. A town vehicle and he had to drive his own personal, personal vehicle. To Massachusetts to get a rear end that he had to have and came back where. His travel expense should be reimbursed, for instance, with.
No, he can just take the greater.
Typically, I've always been reimbursed gas. I just haven't been, uh. Really collecting much of that, but I, like a couple of weeks ago Ned had a question on Zach when he was. Oh, questionable with COVID there. I just had him put in forty dollars gas and had him go pick up whips for a couple of days to get him some. Time, you know? So he just went up to Royers and signed for it. So we did, you know, previously we did have that. Basically an unwritten agreement, but it kinda comes down to the same thing as what you have there anyway on, on mileage and travel expense.
But it, that says when attending so, when attending select board. Training events.
I don't, I don't think this is gonna. My thought on it would it, is it doesn't pertain to the road crew like David just said. Cause that would fall under the road budget and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ned had made a, a comment that he was thinking of maybe changing it to include like, especially like with the elections and stuff like that. Um, I go out, I buy my shower curtains and some of the stuff that I need for that. Versus trying to go through Ned where he would have to go and do all that shopping of that nature as well. Now that won't sit underneath the select board authorized trainings and events.
Well, we can, we can add to that, but that was also kinda where I was going with that next per, next section is. I think we need to just get rid of that. Because that.
I mean, I think.
What you're saying.
Yeah, Ned is the one who generally. Yeah, Ned is the one who generally orders everything, but sometimes we have some day to day stuff like David said postage or something. If Ned's not there, we didn't have their credit card or something, we just have to go out and do our stuff because it's a normal practice of operating our offices.
You could put or and at the end of that, you could put or town uh. What would you call the election? It was like.
Like related.
Yeah, or related related town.
Or equipment supplies.
Well, there's certain elements of town government that are preauthorized or they're authorized by uh. Select board oversight such as the road. Maintenance and elections and.
Yeah, I was gonna say even the elections are that way.
They're merely im- they're implied.
Right.
I'm not sure you have to really get super detailed in here to try and cover every little contingency um. That's just normal governance, but the the stuff that I think you're really trying to get at is the. The one offs.
The like the trainings and events.
Well, I'm part of my thinking is, you know, somebody goes out and spends. You know, let's just say a hundred bucks on some computer equipment. If we didn't really need it, they wanted it and had the ability to get it and then expensed it out. We I want the ability to say, you know, no, thank you. We we didn't ask you to do that and, you know, sorry.
We have a pretty small office, so I think this needs to be reworded. You know, a little bit simpler, but to the point, you know, basically saying that. Kind of like a common sense type of reimbursement.
You could you could keep that first line in there, but make it when. At all possibilities. If it's not prior authorized by the select board, because I know when I was going to trainings, I I we would have to come and get it approved prior. Otherwise, we weren't gonna. Do it, but then emergencies can be. And even then, they're still.
Yeah, but I'm gonna add something in that says emergencies are specifically excluded.
Work on rewording it.
Okay, reword it, you guys.
Let's ta- do we want to table this one for next meeting? Yeah, let's table.
Yeah.
Let's table this uh reimbursement purchase policy.
How far off of on this one was the is the current one? Uh is there not?
It it's it's it the original one is insufficient in my mind to meet. Legal muster and.
When you sent when you send this updated one out, can you send the original too?
Sure. Let me save this, stop the share. There again, purchasing policy, this is a. This is a this is a very old one from several years ago. I actually think it was. Two thousand seventeen, early in two thousand seventeen. But it's very similar to the reimbursement one. It basically tells town employees and other officials that basically no making a purchase. Over a thousand dollars for any items that are don't have a written, excuse me, prior approval of select board. And it also states that the road commissioner exempt from these purchasing limits on all but, you know, that are standard road maintenance things. You can see where I struck out of prior contracts.
Yep, right, I think the road commissioner has the authority to spend up to five thousand dollars or four thousand or something like that without. Getting bids and approval.
But it's a pretty straightforward one. It's been we've had it for several years, just needed a couple of tweaks. And I'll roll down a little farther so people can see. And then, you know, how we receive bids, which is the standard bid opening, the criteria and whatnot. We had some things in here that I thought were not fact based, but opinion based. So like the bidder's financial responsibility is a somewhat subjective measure. The bidder's availability to provide future services again. Subject and the nature and size of the business, uh that's definitely, uh I would say a. A no go and not something to ask.
Yeah. Yep.
And then change orders, the standard statements on change orders and sole source, and then there are exceptions. We occur purchases over ten thousand. And emergency purchases. I mean, we may need to, you know. We may need to table this one because the reimbursement, let me run back up to the top.
Reimbursement kind of coincides with this a little bit.
Yeah, I could go, it might be best to have reimbursement and purchasing together. Let me let me see if I can combine them smoothly and logically. And in a common sense way and get them to work together because they should be together because it's just we're we we're going over very, very. If not the same things, almost identical things.
Yep. Okay, so I make a motion, we table purchasing policy till the next meeting.
Second.
One more thing on that before I'll I'll. I'll agree with it all, but I think too uh previously we had uh. When Michael was chair, we had it so he could go over the uh specified amount in the event of emergencies. Say we had a FEMA emergency and.
Yeah, that's that is there is a separate policy for the emergency stuff. Yeah, that's in our that's in our uh plan.
Yep.
Okay, so it's not in this?
Yeah, no, it was it was it's set separately because that would only be if there wasn't like said emergency. So there is a separate purchasing policy and I will have to find that for an emergency situation. As in, like you said, storm type thing, not.
Right, I I don't remember that. I don't remember the dollar amount, but I I think it was five five thousand, yeah, yeah.
Nah, I gotta work on that shoot.
Yep. Okay, so tabling this purchasing policy that's we're moving on, you can.
Yep.
Get this off the screen.
Alright.
Alright, moving on. Replacement truck purchase.
Mister Road Commissioner. How was your test drive?
So I didn't uh I just took a look at it real quick because I was headed to uh get my vaccination shot today. But I had John take a ride. He said it uh went fine. Basically the same as what we have uh. I think the only different feature it has is it's all hydraulic wing instead of a cable setup. I think that's gonna be a good good idea. Um nice setup, but basically the same as what we have.
Okay, Dan, do we have a total cost of this new truck?
What you got Ned? You talked to him the other day?
Uh it's still the same as it was before and I'll had have to dig around to find the bid, which is gonna take me a couple of minutes. But.
Okay.
As I remember, it was uh seventy seven seventy seven total with trade in.
Okay, um.
Yeah, it was, sorry.
I was just gonna, what kind of warranty does the new truck have, Dave?
Usually it's uh oh. I haven't even asked, but I'm assuming it's always the same. It has been uh everything up to thirty two thousand. And I think your engine and your transmissions are going up to seventy five and uh. You know, sort of trouble with the engine, they'll say the engine's warranted and then if you blow an injector, that's not a part of your engines.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where is it coming from?
Claremont Ford. Is it Claremont Ford now?
Yes, it is.
And that's fully outfitted from them?
It's all set. This is a this is a two thousand twenty that uh Lee had built. Lee Porter's uh explained this at the last meeting. He's kind of a five fifty guru. But this is actually a six hundred, so it's a little heavier suspension, basically the same truck. But uh this is what Lee does. Um so it's kind of like the bigger trucks. Those were um basically your salesman. You know, they'll build these, I'm trying to think of the right words, just uh they'll build these trucks and just wait for. Towns to come by them, you know, otherwise the process is bid it all out separately. And you weren't here at the last meeting, but you could end up into January.
Yep.
You know, we wait till July first to get the truck, then you gotta go through each individual vendor. You gotta go through your other vendors. And we haven't haven't even had one of them send us a bid.
Yeah, I just I just wanted for the record that Dave did reach out to three vendors. We only got one response. One made a lot of phone calls, talked a lot, but never sent us anything for whatever reason. And uh Lee Porter and, you know, a a child of Coventry, sent us one right away.
So um.
We did go all through our due diligence and regarding the purchasing policy and spending the town's money.
So, I mean, I I honestly think with with COVID and the way things are and even in my business, supplies are gonna be hard to get this coming season. And I think, you know, uh if if the if it's time to replace the truck and um this one's totally ready to go, then. Then uh. And it's the one that uh the road commissioner thinks will do the job, then and we have the money in the budget for this.
Then uh. It's it's in the included in there already, right?
Yep, yep, so I I'd make a motion to a to approve the uh. The bid for the new truck that uh the road commissioner David Gallup um. Has has received.
Did you find that number, Ned?
Uh I wasn't looking, I didn't, okay, hang on. I am, I'm I'm Phil, it's gonna it would take me several minutes to find it, but I'm certain it was seventy seven thousand.
So up to seventy nine, so the town will approve up to seventy nine thousand. We're assuming it's seventy seven, but up to seventy nine thousand with the trade of the other truck.
Correct.
I would say Dave, Dave has to recruise and rec- recruise himself from this this vote, so it'd be just fill an eye. So I make a motion to um. To approve the uh the bid for the truck. Um do I have a second?
I'll second it. I just wanna make sure there was a number noted.
Yeah, not more than seventy nine thousand. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, nice new.
What color is it, Dave?
It's same.
Red, is it red, the other one?
Yeah, same.
Yeah.
Same zone we got. All the same equipment. Um like I said, just a little tweak on uh plow, a little tweak on the wing. Uh they set up the hydraulic tank differently. I didn't care for that part. It does give us a higher capacity, so it should keep them fluids cooler. But uh basically the same deal, a little heavier truck.
Can you, Ned, after the meeting, can you find that um?
I will send it out to the board, yes.
Send it out to me tonight, okay?
And are you gonna reach out to Lee?
I will.
Alright, because the truck is in Crasberry right now. I don't know if he's bringing it back to. Casey, his sales uh salesman from Fairfield's brought it up. For me to look at.
Okay.
I don't I don't know if his intention was to leave it here waiting to hear from us or.
Okay. Alright, I will do that.
Okay, um RFPs, I guess, for uh stabilization of the Coventry Community Church.
So I missed the last meeting. I didn't get to replay the whole thing. Is the we have this now?
Yeah, David, you wanna give us some news, Mr. Barlow?
We do in fact have the quick claim deed signed by the church or the conference giving. In a sense, the church to the town. It is in.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Three years in the making, but we got it done.
Three, you know, I think it's more like eighteen. That might be generous. It's a it's a lesson in your church is in decline, you you wanna see it preserved, you better hand it over. So, uh yes, it is now. In the town clerk's office, ready for recording with the tax form.
Nice.
Okay, so on to the.
But the R the RFP is very straightforward. Uh basically gonna go and just say. Reference the two reports that we have from the one from engineering benches, the one from uh Gen. And uh needing to meet the historical guidelines for the preservation trust for Vermont and that. Uh some of their money comes through the Department of the Interior who has to meet that. Give the bidders thirty days and, you know, sometime in mid May at our second meeting in May. We will have a bid opening and somebody's gonna do some work for the town.
So this is the. This is a RFP for everything that was brought up in the reports.
Correct.
So um I had a thought now that we have taken ownership up for the church. I was wondering about historic preservation. Um I was wondering what um the select board's thoughts were about uh the town reaching out to the foundation. For some historical uh preservation funds to help us uh. With, you know, the roof and the siding and, you know, the reconstruction of this church. You guys um in favor of me reaching out to the. Uh town foundation. Um I know they have a meeting supposedly, I think tomorrow. Is that correct, Ned?
That is correct. Still haven't gotten the notice from it yet, but.
So I would think like Ned and I would would attend if you guys gave me the uh authority to reach out to them for. For some some funds.
Here here's my thought is maybe we wait until we get the bid back and know how much we're gonna be needing to spend.
We have a ballpark figure. I mean, we won't go, we definitely not gonna go under.
How old is that ballpark figure? Because plywood's.
I I say we're gonna be quite a bit higher when to Ned.
Yeah, I I the the.
The plywood.
Yeah, the yeah, no, yeah.
I know the plywood, but it's just everything. Everything's gone up, so that's why I'm I I I would not be surprised if that ballpark figure. That we've had gotten from the past is nowhere near what it's gonna be.
I agree with you, Phil, but.
My my gut reaction is the 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 old engineering stuff is about. Hundred and fifteen, hundred and eighteen thousand. The roof itself was thirty thirty six thousand. I I think that's, you know, thirty six thousand would be nice if you could rip off the shingles and just lay in another set of shingles. Yeah, thirty six thousand would probably do it. It's been leaking for a while. I just can't imagine there's nothing but some bad stuff underneath. Some of those spots.
I just don't wanna go to them and say, hey, this is what we're thinking and then it's got I I just saw this happen somewhere else. And it turns out to be a lot more money than what you were thinking. Now you gotta go back. I'd rather have a hard number of knowing what we're gonna be spending and then say, hey, this is what we're thinking. How much do you guys wanna work on? Or do we wanna divvy this up and this is exactly how much it's gonna be?
I think we should just reach out there and to see what their what their feelings are about helping us at all and we don't have an exact estimate, but I. I can do a guesstimation. Um I I'm sure we can spend a couple hundred thousand on the church. And what are they willing to to help us out with? Are they willing to help us with a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, ten thousand or all two hundred thousand?
Now, I guess that's where I I look at it as you having a hard number gives them a better idea because you could say. You you they could say, yeah, we're gonna have a hundred thousand and then we're only gonna be spending a hundred and fifty thousand on it, then they're pulling a bigger chunk of it, so.
Which is fine, that's they that's why they're there. They were set up for historic preservation and I don't believe they've done too much for the town. I wouldn't think we wait. They only meet once a month. I think we throw it out there. They're gonna think about it, whatever number it is. And in another month, when they have another meeting, at least we can be on the agenda. By then, we should. By then, we should have some, some solid figures.
Right, and I, and I, my gut says, the minimum we should ask is fifty thousand, because that's what we got from the Preservation Trust. I think that's a good floor to start from, where that, it, where it goes to, I don't know. I am really hoping that it would not go above, their share would be like, let's just say seventy-five thousand, or maybe a hundred thousand at the absolute most, because we're talking, that, once we head into fifty and the other, we're talking something that's like two hundred thousand, just to stabilize the church, much less actually, you know, do a, a serious rehabilitation to some of its facilities. Because there's still work to do, however, Dave Gallup has proven that the bell does ring quite effectively.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I guess if you, if you guys think we should wait, then I'll wait, but um, I, I'm, I feel a little differently. But I'm.
I, I, if I could interject as a, just bystander, I, I would encourage you to interact with him sooner rather than later. But maybe just as a warning, or a heads up.
I, I agree with Dave Barlow, I think we should.
They have a written policy about applying, they, they like things in writing, I know how, I know the whole history of the whole policy, but, but in terms of applying for their money, they like it in writing, um, so we'll have to get to that, but um, a heads up, I'm sure would be good. Uh, my question is, I think for the board is, uh, is the initial effort with the church uh, just to focus on stabilization?
That would be my thought.
Meaning that you, you, you set, you, you turn it into an edifice essentially. And just as background, keeping in mind, there is no septic system, there is none. So there's really no possibility, uh, without extensive works to do much of anything with it from a public use standpoint, but there's a lot of stabilization that needs to happen, just to make sure it doesn't fall down. And that it looks good. So I guess I would recommend uh, and maybe get the, if like, if there's a consensus that stabilization is the, is the effort right now.
I believe that is the consensus, is that we, is that Phil and David, is that what you're, where you're at?
Yeah, edifice for the moment.
Same.
And I, I think that then gives you a pretty good talking point with the uh, foundation.
Right, phase one.
I guess that's maybe where I was kinda going with that too, was that this phase one is not necessarily, well, historical preservation, if you look at it preservation wise, but I would go with the historical preservation of more of making it look good, after you get your stabilization done.
Well, we will, they will be paying now.
Yeah, stabilization includes making it look good.
Okay.
And all the ornamentation that's rotted off the front of it, especially the northeast corner.
Yeah, I guess it'd be one in the same.
It's all in, it's all in the reports as well.
I know, I know we have a two hundred and fifty thousand-ish set aside in that in the plan, the town economic development plan, but I don't think we wanna use all those funds just on this church. That's to spread without, throughout the town, once the planning commission starts, you know, getting going, you know, there's a lot of, lot of places to spread that money.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, but you do have uh, the Buildings and Maintenance Fund, which has even more money in it.
Yeah. Okay.
Can tell you exactly what that is, currently, it's over half a million.
Alright, so does the board give me permission to go to talk with the town foundation? And just tell them what we're thinking, as far as the, the church, you know, as far as, you know, getting it stabilized and historically preserved, and looking for some support, and telling them we'll get them back, we're gonna get, we're in the process of getting some estimates and the RFPs, and um, when we get those back, uh, you know, we'll, we'll reach out to them and in, in a written form to see about some, you know, some funds, and if they'll approve anything.
I'll make the motion to allow Scott to do the initial heads up to the foundation.
So.
Okay.
And if I could ask uh, a couple other things, one, I think one of the immediate things we should do is change the lock. Then we simply don't know who has keys, uh, so we should change the lock on the door. If I could get permission to do that.
You have my permission?
Does that, does that need to be a motion?
I think that's a supply that.
That's, that's a security, that's a security of a.
We're talking less than a hundred bucks, it's just a very simple deadbolt, is all it is.
Um, the other piece that needs to happen, uh, just so the board knows, is I, I need as the church, with my church hat on, which is up here, to finish the closeout process from the church perspective, so there's a small number of items that need to move from the church um, over to the Newport church. Just in case people are asking, what's that guy doing in there, taking stuff? It's, as long as it's described, the description meets me, it's me moving the uh, communion set, and a couple crosses, and, and a couple other small items that are part of the agreement that go to the Newport United Church. And I'll try and get that done within the week.
And when, when we get passive to ensure this, should we ensure that uh, the, aside from just the facility itself and the, the facility in the building, there was a several, I mean, like five pianos, this is aside from the grand piano that's up near the altar. What should we do about those in there? Are those gonna move, or?
David, are you gonna play?
There's only two pianos. That are not, the, the grand piano belongs to John Miller.
Yeah.
And uh, but the two upright pianos are property of the church, and then there's a, what looks like an upright piano, which is actually an organ.
Ah, okay, alright.
And then there's an electric organ which is broken, so that can go in the, into the skid, I mean, the dumpster.
Okay, alright.
I think it's, I, I wouldn't do anything with that at the moment. Fonzie Jesus, on the other hand, there's a question about that, but we'll deal with that down the road.
Okay.
Alright, well, thanks for all your effort, Dave, on getting us uh, the deed for the church, I know you've worked long and hard, and it was a slow process, and we thank you, the town thanks you, I think it's gonna be quite an asset for the community, once we get it looking as good as the one in Irisburg looks, with some lights on it, and lit up at night, and, you know, maybe it'll help uh, motivate other town uh, residents to spruce up their properties a little bit, and ask um, you know, ask the planning commission on, hey, you know, what, what can we do, and maybe by then, we'll have some, some things in place, so that the whole town can follow suit.
We'll get the clock working with the gong.
There you go.
Yeah.
On the lock, can you do it, or get the uh, I think it's Ken out in Irisburg, where it's matched with master key, would that be a good idea?
I, I don't think it needs to be, just something simple, basic lock, because really, I mean, we can key it the same, but I hate to say it, but the door is.
Oh yeah, the door is not that great.
Yeah, it's.
I, I'm, I'm just meaning as, as a simplicity for tracking keys, not necessarily tracking, tracking, but instead of having, oh, this is the church key, and now we gotta go.
Right, I mean, probably once we, once we start the preservation of this church, possibly we'll put a really nice new door on this church for aesthetics. Maybe.
Historic preservation, gotta be very careful, very careful.
They're actually, I think they're quite nice doors, I think they're probably original, it's just the locking system is a little bit meh, but we can take the basic measures.
Yeah.
Anything else, Dave? Okay, moving on, uh, looks like we just have warrants.
Um, yeah, I wasn't ready for that.
I've looked at these here, um.
Oh yeah, Deb sent them over this morning.
Yeah, I've looked at the payroll, I looked at some of these, I started to sign them.
Everything, look, Deb, are you still on?
Deb is there.
Um, the, the, there was a receipt missing.
Picking shovel?
Nope.
I had that discussion with Ned.
Saw one for Newport rental for uh, ninety dollars for a um, for, I believe that was gonna be for my uh, pressure washer, but it wasn't the right one, but uh, trying to think where that was. They sent it back the other day when we had the uh, roller here. Thought I saw something.
I don't remember what that one was for.
I'm looking, hang on. Damn, man.
Boy, this town spends a lot of money, holy miracle. Deb, stop!
Well, you need to tell Ned stop! He gives me the bills.
Deb, it was the Coventry Fire District for three hundred and something dollars for the garage.
Oh, must be I still have that invoice in the folder downstairs.
Or it just got stuck, got stuck to the back of the other ones, like it happens to do.
Yeah, no, must be I did, I will get that one to you. But there is three for that one, Kimball, CC, and the garage.
Yeah. Newport rental pressure washer, thirty-nine ninety-nine, oh, that was, no, Newport rental, yeah, it was oil seal and packing kit.
Yeah, what'd you say the number was? Thirty-nine?
The, the cost, there was one thirty-nine ninety-nine, and the other one, uh, yeah, the oil seal was thirty-nine ninety-nine, the packing kit was fifty-nine ninety-nine.
Yeah, I think we sent everything back. When was the billing from? Should've been just ago, week or two ago.
April one.
Yeah, I wouldn't pay that right now, I sent that stuff back. I waited since December to get it. Weren't even close to what we needed.
Okay, so, Deb, when I send these out, I'll note it on the electronic signature.
Okay.
So, did, Dave Barlow, did you review the um, the bills, all the bills from the carpenters, and from, what is it, J, JB Carpentry, is everything there, look, looks, adds up?
I did, I, I think it looks fine.
That looks good, okay.
I question on that, David.
Yes.
So does that include the tiling on the backsplash?
It does not, we're paying for that separately.
Okay, so that should be uh.
And I had a meeting, I met with a Tyler today, and we went over the various things that he corrected.
Okay, so you're getting those corrected?
Well, he did it.
Oh, he did it already?
Correct, yes.
Looks good?
I think it's within acceptable parameters.
Okay.
So.
What, was there some tiles out, or crooked, or?
Uh, there was a broken tile uh, that apparently was caused the, the um, at an outlet. This, we need to get longer screws, or uh, probably uh, uh, Joe will get some longer screws for the outlets. So we don't crack tiles, and.
Okay.
There was an issue with a bowed wall, which is still an issue, but there's not a whole lot you can do about it at this point.
Did he fix that stuff to the left, Dave?
Uh, I'll let you take a look at it, see what you think, I think it's acceptable, there, there's another way to fix it, but uh, we'll see.
Okay.
So if the wall is bow, bowed, I think he could've shimmed it, I mean, if it looks unreasonable, uh, you know.
Well, because with the tile, the tile doesn't like bows, it rippled a little bit, so you get it. Instead of sitting flat, perfectly flat, it, there's a bit of a.
The gap for the grout is bigger and smaller in certain areas, depending whether.
I, I, I think it's, it's, well, you have to look at it.
So, yeah, the tile's gonna stick out, there's gonna be more of an edge, right?
Yeah, a corner, a corner or an end, it's gonna, it's just not gonna sit. You know, it's a case, okay, well, is that the drywall, or is it the, is it the tile? Or do we care?
Well, I, I guess.
Is it, is it bad enough that we care?
I'm not looking at it, I don't know, what do you guys, what, you guys are the eyes, you're noticing it.
I guess it's, you know, I noticed the bow, I guess to me, the stuff that looked bad is to the left, and Dave pointed out there by the electric outlet. Those were the things I picked up on, and like I say, you do see the bow, I mean, but you have to be looking at it.
I mean, we did spend almost, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on this remodel, and he got to do it at his own pace, so the work, the workmanship should be, should be nice, I mean, they did the bathrooms, and the tile in the bathrooms looks nice, and those walls, it could've.
Comparable, it's comparable to the bathrooms, in my opinion.
Alright, so maybe.
Issues in the bathrooms as well, it, it depends on how how much tiling you've ever done, and how much, how closely you wanna look at it.
Okay.
I don't know.
If you, if it was in your house, Dave, that you just built, you would probably have them redo it?
Uh, yeah.
What about if it was? What it, what about if it was in your guest bath?
I wouldn't care, because it is in my guest bath.
Okay. Ned, did you have a look at it?
I'm, hang on. I was looking for the uh, truck bid, uh, yeah, I had a look at it, and then David pointed out some stuff, it's acceptable, it's, you know, it's the best I could say. Yeah, you know, I'm I'm a little torn, I'm, either way, I, I think uh, I, 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 I don't know, I would say, I, I would say I wanna discount, I wouldn't say redo.
Um, I'd like to maybe take a peek at it then, because I know, I know Joe, and if it was in his, if you were doing the work for him in his house, I think he's pretty fussy. But it could be one of those things where it, it's acceptable, you know, but.
Right, we're gonna get a separate bill from uh, Von's Carpet One for that, all the tile work. But that's, then that's not to say that Joe is, Joe's still the guy. He's the GC.
Right, even if there's a bow on the wall, before the guy sticks the tile to the wall, he can knock out he's got a half inch to work with to knock down the, the cement border, the, or the tile, to get rid of the bow, you know what I mean? If he, if it's, if it's.
Yeah. And it's probably a sixteenth of an inch, it's not a, you know, it's the kind of bow you get from drywall compounds, and tape, you know, it's not. That's why I was kinda shaking, well, is it the drywaller, or is it the tile installer?
So it's still Joe?
Right, yeah, Joe put the drywall in.
Yeah, he hired these guys to do it, so, alright. Well, I think what we should do is maybe you should, when, is Joe there still every day, or he's not there anymore?
No.
Maybe we should, maybe you should call him and have him come out, and have him look at it with you, and point it out to him, and see what he thinks. To say, I, you know, I, this is borderline acceptable, I think this should be addressed, and, and see what he says.
He'd have. He'd have an idea.
Yeah, especially when you still have his check. For seventy-five grand. Let's have him come out. You wanna give him the check and you wanna talk to him and you wanna hold the check.
I think, um, so Ned, I'm happy to be there if, if we can schedule it. Um, the, uh. I guess it's important to note too, the most of the cost of this is the lift. The, the actual rehab work in the kitchen price is, um, very reasonable, so. Um, we should, we'll, we'll work this out as a good outcome, but it's, it was way under budget and I think. Um, very reasonably priced and that the VCI stuff being the principal contributor to that, the candidacy and especially.
Yep. Yeah, well, we put some pretty good, um, um, as not estimates, but allowances in there for, for these items, so. Um, that's good.
So, um. I send the JB Carpentry one through. We'll still sign that.
Yeah, and we'll just hold that until David meets with him.
Yeah, have David meet with him. I, I mean, I, we're gonna pay him regardless, but I think you could address it. And I think when you're holding his check. In your hand, he may, he might know that that's only gonna cost him two hundred bucks out of his pocket to make it perfect and make the town happy. He'd probably be willing to do it.
Okay, so I am, um. Sending those warrants out right now. I did send you guys the warrants. The AP warrants and payroll warrants for signature. Um, up to last week, I think it was that I had not gotten out to you guys yet.
Yeah, I got those done.
So I'm gonna do. These right now. David, if you can do those when you get a chance to.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion on the warrants? If not, we'll move to the minutes.
I think the only other thing to possibly mention with Joe is, um, that he also actually financed that whole entire job out of his pocket. Without billing us, which he definitely could have sent us interim billings. Um, he did not, but he did finance that whole entire project. Out of his pocket. So I don't know, depending on what the difference, the cost may be for that fix. Maybe that should just be offset possibly. Because of that as well.
Yeah, I'm sure he'll give a, maybe he'll say, oh my God, that's not acceptable. I didn't notice that. Let me fix it. He might say, yeah, that's, that's not right. I'm gonna take care of it. Or he might say, you know, there was just a bow in the wall and that's the best we could do. And then Dave can have the discretion to say, okay, we'll. We'll leave it, but we just wanted you to see it. Cause I'm sure, I'm sure he, he probably hasn't seen it. But yeah, thanks for letting us know that, Deb. I, I was surprised to see that we hadn't made any payments at all or received any bills. Okay, Ned, I know you're in great thought, thought looking for that.
Yeah, I'm back. Minutes. Sorry.
It's fine. Do you wanna put them up on the screen?
Sure. Let me hang on, let me open the file first. That would be helpful. Okay. I always hate when this machine does this. So as it go. Let me try this again. There we go. Alright, big size please, machine. There we go. The minutes. Of April, of last time, April fifth.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, you can take that down, I guess.
Alright. Let's stop share. There we go.
Thank you, everybody.
We have, we have to sign all those, right? We have to send them through. For however many minutes we have.
We did it last, we did it last week, two weeks ago.
You signed them?
Yep.
Oh, so you got that, okay.
Actually, no, I don't think we.
No, no, we approved and they have not been signed. I will.
Right.
I'm gonna come, I'm gonna come down there, I think tomorrow, Ned, to try and take over that network equipment, so I can walk through that process with you.
Alright, that'd be great. Thank you.
Um, one, one question I wanted to say too is, so. I'll be fully vaccinated here right off. I don't know where Ned's at as far as his vaccination or David Gallup. I don't know where you're at with it, but. You, you mentioned you had gotten vaccinated today, so if, if we're all vaccinated, are we gonna, what are our thoughts about having our meeting? Meeting back in, in the community center soon.
Well, we've made it, we've made it that we can. We did that two meetings ago, so we can.
We definitely can. The problem is, is that, uh, people. I, 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 I'm uncertain about fill up of the technology for how good a quality video we can provide to the people.
The videos, the video is good, the audio is what needs to be played with. Did you get my email the other day to try ordering that?
And I did not try to order it yet. I was gonna, I wanted to talk to you about it.
Okay.
So when we can do it tomorrow.
Yeah, no, it, it's the video, the video is fine. The audio is gonna be the, uh, fun one, which I think you can work around. I just. With my surgery, I wasn't able to get figured out. I told Dan's planning to do their planning commission meeting in the, there on Wednesday. Um, with them. Um, so I told them, I said, we'll at least have it the way it was previously. You'll have that mic. You just might not be able to hear everybody. Uh, from them. You'll be able, they'll be able to hear everybody that's on the Zoom call, but. From like them around the table, they might not be able to hear everybody very well, cause I know we were having that problem with that microphone. So that'll be something I'll work on, we'll work on here.
I've been using the, uh, that, that, uh, large camera here, uh, that was out in the cart with the projector. For my meetings and it works very, very well.
It works good for you right there and you're right next to it. It's the table being five, six feet away from it. That's the problem. Well, well, that big camera with the speakerphone and microphone built in, the Logitech. Works good right in front of you. The problem is, is being on the table, the camera is too close to see everybody.
Right, yeah.
So, we might be, we, I, I could, maybe I could figure that out. Is maybe we just use a different, uh, another camera or actually, I think that camera comes off and you can plug it in somewhere. So I can, we'll look at that tomorrow.
Okay, and actually that, that bring, I'm getting my shot. I'm gonna take some time off for Thursday afternoon and Friday. To get my shot and to get, uh, wedding rings.
Oh, congratulations.
I'll be taking a little time off. Oh yes, my, uh, my Heidi and I are very happy and it's cost you a fortune.
Don't expect to be able to lift those wedding rings with the arm that you got the shot in.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, yeah, either way, but yes, we're both getting our shots and our rings in the same weekend. Both, both together. It should be exciting and fun. And I think there'll be a few tears from one side or the other, maybe both. So we'll see. I'll report back at the next meeting.
Oh, what time are you in tomorrow morning? I'm gonna give you a quick call, Ned.
I'm here generally right about, right, you know, a little before eight or right about eight.
Alright, perfect. Anybody have anything else? I wanna thank everybody. Yeah. I second the motion, Jared. I just wanna thank everybody for, um. Their input and, uh. Till next time.
Have a good one.
Good morning.
Yeah, thanks.
Dave Gallup, can you forward me that, that, uh, the bid? I cannot find the bid here on my computer and I know I have it here somewhere.
He dropped off already.
I have it. Ned, I have it. I'll send it to you.
Okay, I know it's here. I just, you know, computers. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Speak to you in the morning. Thanks.